Okay, we will call the Board of Commissioners' meeting at order at 10:01. All those able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public here for comment for items that are not appearing on today's agenda? Seeing no one, any additions to the agenda from the board?
None, I'm aware.
All right, if the meeting minutes are fine, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held September 2nd.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting held on September 2nd. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Our first item is Resolution Number 10 of 2025, authorizing the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program, and Leslie is all ready to tell us about it.
Not much else to say, really, just requesting Commissioners' consideration of Resolution 10 of 2025. This authorizes CEDOCOG to submit on Center County's behalf an application to Department of Community Economic Development for the, this would be for the federal fiscal year 2025, CDBG application, as authorized under the Housing and Community Development Act, and further certifying compliance with the requirements of said program.
Well, we do have somebody here from the federal level, so why don't you tell them how absolutely amazing the Community Development Block Program is, especially in the more rural parts of the county?
Sure, so I know Center County really is supportive of infrastructure projects, namely sewer, water, and lots of our smaller rural communities just do not have the local funding to maintain, to fix, replace, repair these older systems, and so they're failing, and they're, you know, failing our residents. So, CDBG is really supportive and helpful when it comes to that much-needed funding, and so I get the pleasure of administering this grant and seeing projects from, from application to, to closing with beneficiaries, and it's, it's been, it's been a pretty awesome thing. I've only been doing this a little over a year, almost a year and a half, and I've gotten to see a number of projects close out and make a big difference.
And unfortunately, at least in the President's budget, community block grants have zero funding. So I know Congressman Thompson has been very much in favor of the Community Development Block Grant Program, I believe the other Senator is as well, so we'd, we'd hope your Senator would consider pushing back a bit on that one and saying, hey, my constituents all across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania desperately need these funds to keep their water and sewer infrastructure fully functional.
Well, that's, you know, I think I, I can speak with some measure of understanding that, you know, a lot of, a lot of counties and a lot of areas around the country spend those monies on urban development and a lot of, a lot of other related projects, and we have pretty much over, I think, the last almost 30 years focused directly on, on water and sewer projects for, and I know we've been very successful in recent times in the competitive end of the, of the block grant allocation as well. So we've actually done pretty well, but it's made a big difference in a lot of our rural communities that otherwise would have no way of, of funding oftentimes very expensive DEP mandated upgrades to their, their infrastructure, so.
Or just replacement of 80- and 90-year-old elements.
Or that.
Having a discussion last week about how sewer pipe pretty much lasts 80 to 90 years, and that, that's it. After that, you've got to dig it all up and put in new pipe, and there's actually a number of communities in Center County where their sewer pipe's getting to be 80 or 90 years old.
Oh, absolutely.
Let's hope the PVC pipe that is younger than 80 or 90 years has, has a longer shelf life.
We'll hope, we'll hope, but we do want to thank CEDOCOG and Center County Planning Department for all their assistance with that. So, sorry, I've kind of been hogging it, Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, that's all good. These are, these projects are really crucial to the well-being of our rural communities, so, you know, thanks for the work that CEDOCOG does on facilitating our applications, and, you know, we certainly support the continuation of this federal program.
Thank you, it's our pleasure.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I'm all good.
All right.
Let's go.
I think we're going to approve this one.
I will move that we adopt Resolution 10 of 2025.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 10 of 2025. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, and now I believe you have some additional paperwork we need to work on, Leslie.
I do, I'm also requesting your consideration for a couple of master file documents. These are documents that are CDBG-related and required to be on file. The first one is the Financial Management Plan. This is really a document that outlines the process by which the county approves invoices for anything CDBG-related, and again, this is not a new document, it's just one that needs to be reviewed and updated periodically. I'm also requesting your consideration of the CDBG procurement policy. This is a master file document which states that all procurement and bidding will be in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code 2 CFR Part 200 procurement requirements for the federal Community Development Block Grant.
Great, well, thanks for covering that as well. Any questions by the Commissioner on the required federal paperwork?
Nope, just more layers of the onion we have to peel back to get a project working.
Yep.
And I will move that we approve the planning and community development items 1 and 2.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the two items for planning and community development. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Well, thanks, Leslie, thanks for coming, and hopefully you'll have a beautiful drive back in this amazing weather. And now, Don from Domestic Relations also has, I believe it's somewhat federal paperwork for us.
Yes, yes, I do. This morning I'm here, I'm seeking approval of the 2025 to 2030 Title 4D Cooperative Agreement and the appendix contracts to that agreement. The Title 4D Agreement is a contract negotiated jointly between the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, the Bureau of Child Support Enforcement, the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, the Court of Common Pleas represented by the Administrative Office of the Pennsylvania Courts, Domestic Relations Association of Pennsylvania and the Domestic Relations Offices. This negoti, or this negotiation and contract is a period of five years effective October 1st, 2025, running through September 30th, 2030. The contract basically outlines responsibilities for the improvement and the effectiveness of the child support Title 4D enforcement services. The contract provides performance measures for domestic relations to receive incentive funding, as well as allowing the county to seek reimbursement for child support expenses for, at a rate of, the federal financial participation rate is 66% versus 34% for the county. The agreement has clearly assigned the responsibilities and services we provide from each of these cooperating agencies. Appendix to the cooperative agreement are four other contracts. The first, first is the Sheriff's Agreement, and that has been reviewed with the Sheriff, and basically there's no change, just in how he assists domestic relations and law enforcement efforts and security, and with that agreement it allows us to submit direct, indirect costs monthly for reimbursement for those expenses that he provides and services the Sheriff provides to our office. The remaining three are the Title 4D Attorneys that represent domestic relations. The first two, the first one is renewal with Attorney Jennifer Beerly at a rate of $125 an hour, which is reimbursable at 66 and 34%, and her along with the other 4D attorneys basically help represent us in contempt of court and bench warrant hearings, and represent intergovernmental plaintiffs, and basically assist me with any questions that I don't know the answer to at, at time. The second contract was, with the same thing as with Abigail Jones, it's also a renewal for her to continue with us, and it's $125 an hour at 66% reimbursement and 34% county. And the last is a new contract with Tonya Torquato at $125 an hour with reimbursement 66% federal, 34% county. Ms. Torquato's replacing our previous 4D attorney, Kim Hamilton, who retired, and, and she's obviously well-known with, as a predominant family law attorney in the area, and she has relations with the staff of domestic relations as well as the courts here in Center All these contracts and cooperative agreement have been pre-approved by the state through the Bureau of Child Support Enforcement, and with your approval will be accepted as our ongoing agreement for service.
Great, thanks, Don, thanks for covering that, and thanks again to the help of your department, the Sheriff's Department, and these three attorneys who are agreeing to do work for domestic relations at something in the ballpark of half of the going-market rate, so we very much appreciate their assistance. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Good, all right.
I'll move to approve the contract renewal with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services and Court of Common Pleas for the Title 4D Cooperative Agreement.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve, I believe it's a five-year contract renewal with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services and the Court of Common Pleas for the Title 4D Cooperative Agreement. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, great, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
All right, and now I believe we have Denise from the District Attorney's Office with another very important agreement.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
I'm here requesting the Commissioners to hopefully agree for the pass-through agreements for Center Safe as well as the State College Police Department. So this is for the stop grant that was, it's a three-year stop grant, but it's broken down into three-year increments, so this was brought before you last year for 2024 to, for 2025, so this is for the 2026 year, for January 1st through December 31st. And so for the State College Police Department, that would be for $47,950, and for Center Safe, it'd be for $49,100 for the, the 2026 time period. So this is, obviously, the stop grant is an incredibly important grant that comes through Center County, through the federal government. It really helps with the, Center County has a really strong, like, response to domestic violence and sexual assault. You know, we have a really good coordinated response in the community. We have our monthly task force meetings where we all come together and, you know, try to really make sure that victims and survivors are getting what they need, and so Center County just has a really strong presence in that, and it really takes a lot of initiative in trying to just provide the best services to victims and survivors. So this pass-through agreement will help with that continuation of services for the victims and survivors in our community.
Great, well, thanks Denise, I was actually at the Living in One Neighborhood event last week and was talking with some of the staff from Center Safe, and they said this is an absolutely crucial grant for them, for their funding and their ability to serve, last time I checked, I believe it was hundreds and hundreds of individuals, women, men, and children with this.
Yes, it can affect anybody and everybody, yes, so.
Yes. Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, no, thank you, this is really crucial funding for, you know, what is, a problem that occurs in every community, I think, and it does here as well, and we try to take it very, very seriously here.
Yeah, whether it's somebody like that we know or love, yeah, because everybody's impacted to some, to some extent, yeah.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Well, I think that between the Center Safe, the District Attorney's Office, and the State College Police Department, I think this has, has proven itself over the years to be a very, very good and effective program, and fully supported.
Yeah.
Any questions from the press on this one? No, all right, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the stop violence against women pass-through agreements with Center Safe and State College Police Department.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the stop violence against women pass-through agreements with Center Safe and the State College Police Department. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, great, thank you, Denise.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. And now, our Recorder of Deeds, Joe Davidson, has a contract.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm here this morning to ask the Commissioners to provide the funding for a project to preserve and restore approximately 15 deed books with CoFile Technologies, Inc. These deed books, the earliest one would be Deed Book 67, it dates back to 1865, and the most current deed book that we have in this group is Deed Book 168, and it goes to 1941. Now, these deed books are not in bad shape, but they're not in great shape. These are not every deed book between 1865 and 1941, but selected ones that are in the, I'm not, I'm going to say, the most deteriorated conditions. Hopefully, after this preservation and restoration process, these deed books will, will be lasting another 250 years for Center County Government. So the total cost of the project is $59,086.29, and this is going to be funded through the Recorder of Deeds Records Improvement Funds money.
You know, Joe, there'll be none of us here in this room that will know whether these deeds, these deed books survive 250 years.
Well, hopefully, as a result of this project, we're going to be assured that they will be surviving after.
So we have a, we have a 250-year guarantee on this work then?
That's the warranty.
I could ask you for that, but I'm sure.
Right, there you go.
CoFile Technologies, we've worked with them in the past, they've done almost 100 deed books for the office before, and the work that they've done, you know, before, well, I'm confident that they'll be here for another 250 years.
Interesting that the first one is from the end of the Civil War, and the last one is from the beginning of World War II.
Yeah, yeah. Now, this is just a select group, and that, these, these books in this group are the worst ones in that group, so.
Commissioner Concepcion?
So does this include digitizing them, or is it just preserving the physical copies?
All of these books are already digitized, and they're all backed up on microfilm.
Okay.
But this project will include, will, will get as a result of the project, a PDF-A file of all these images too, so that'll be yet a fourth digital backup.
Nice, sounds good.
Just out of curiosity, Joe, how many people actually touch the books in the course of a year? Do they mostly use the electronic means?
Yeah, these books probably haven't been touched in 10 years.
Yeah.
But they still, part of the project will be deacidifying the pages and that, because in 1865, they were still using iron ink, or ink that contains iron in it, and so the preservation of that is important, because the iron affects the paper, and, and they'll deacidify that to slow down and hopefully prevent the process of deteriorating all the pages from the iron ink.
It's important stuff.
Yeah, all right, unless there's anything else, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to add the contract with CoFile Technologies, Inc. to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion, a second to add the contract with CoFile Technologies, Inc. to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, great, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, Derek? Okay.
All right, and now, moving on to human services, Kathy has an item from the Super Department, Mental Health, Intellectual Disability, early intervention, drug and alcohol.
Good morning. I am here today with a wonk of terminology for the Commissioners, and we'll kind of walk through this a little bit to explain.
What was that word again?
A wonk of terminology.
Oh, all right.
I'm here today to ask that the Board consider approving the performance-based contracting SCO agreement with the Office of Developmental Programs. So we'll start with some of this terminology. This is for our Intellectual Disabilities Department, and our case managers who work out of our office are called service coordinators, or supports coordinators, and the, the group of them are our Supports Coordination Organization, or the SCO. And the Office of Developmental Programs, which is the state office, have identified a series of expectations or requirements under which we have to now operate, and have established benchmarks that we will now have to meet, performance-based measures. And the rate that we will receive for performing our case management responsibilities will be based on our ability, the rate we receive will be based on our ability to meet these performance measures. So we now have to sign an agreement with the state office that we will meet these performance measures in order to be paid to provide this service. Now, they are different tiers of rates, so we are obligated to meet the base-level performance measures, and if we, and, and we will be provided technical assistance so that we can meet this base level of performance, but if we can meet the second-level tier, we will get a higher rate of pay for performing above and meeting the second tier, so we'll get a, the next level, and then there's a third level. Our goal is to at least get to the second-level tier, but our first step is to meet the standard, the basic standard of performance for Supports Coordination. So we are asking that the Board sign the agreement with the Office of Developmental Programs. This will qualify us as Center County Supports Coordination Organization to continue offering Supports Coordination services to individuals who participate in services through Pennsylvania's Consolidated Community Living and Person-Family Directed Supports Waivers. These are the Medicaid waivers that we enroll individuals with intellectual disabilities in to receive medical assistance, to pay for their services. We then provide the Supports Coordination, as well as those individuals who receive base-funded services through our Human Services Block Grant. We provide their Supports Coordination, and we will do this under the performance-based contracting model that the state has set, and they will then monitor our performance, the state office will monitor our performance, and again, provide us with technical assistance so that we can meet that base-level series of standards. There's no cost to the county at this point, but again, our goal is to first achieve that standard base level of requirements, and hopefully begin to work on that second-level tier so that we can improve our rate of payment. The, the period of time we're looking at is this first five years, from January 1st, 2026, to December 31st of 2031, we're just looking at the first five years. My guess is that the state will continue to work on the performance measures, maybe make some updates and changes as we work through this process. It's, it's an interesting series of learning experiences. We are hopeful that there will be lots of technical assistance, and we will look for opportunities to support our staff so that they are able to meet the measures that have been established by the Office of Developmental Programs.
Great, thanks, Kathy, any questions on this item?
Other than, I think, Leslie, you're going to have to up your game, because this may be more complicated than the Community Development Block Grant.
I don't know, I just love this.
I'm going to assume you have this under control, Kathy, because this seems very, very, very layered.
We're working on it. Our, our staff are monitoring the performance standards very closely, asking a lot of questions, and working with staff to brainstorm strategies that will help them to best meet the standards as they are presented.
Okay, great, and I believe we're now going to have Julia come up, and then we'll vote on both items after that. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to Julia.
I'll be quick, I promise.
Oh, that's all right.
Good morning. I'm before you to ask the approval of a lease agreement with Service Access Management Incorporated and the county for lease space in the Community Services Building. The monthly rate is $1,272 until December 31st, 2025. So what we're asking is for a brief lease to give us a little bit of time to live in the building. Since Sam is embedded in the building, we want to make sure that we're being fair when we assess them for their share of security and cleaning costs.
Great, well, thanks for covering that, Julia, and it is nice that we can at least build back some of the costs of the new building for organizations that we work closely with, and, I don't know, last time I checked, they were working with something like 24 Pennsylvania counties, heck, it's probably more than that by now.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's many counties, you're right.
So, Commissioner Concepcion, questions on this one?
Yeah, no, thanks for working through this and getting, you know, these lease spaces, you know, working on filling them with clients that are really closely tied to what our mission is as a county with human services, and it should be a really helpful co-location.
Yeah, I think so too.
Mr. Dershowitz?
We've had a great working relationship with SAM for, what, 15 years? I don't even know, maybe not that long, but it seems that.
Sounds about right, actually.
We were one of the first counties that they, they got involved in, so, yeah.
I think they started over in Lancaster or York somewhere, then they branched out.
It might have been Berks.
Berks, okay.
Schoolkill, yeah.
Yeah.
And then they branched out to more, many more counties.
But I do have some more questions for Julia on the performance-based contracting SCO agreement.
Well, it's a good thing I have an expert right here.
Yeah, let's bring him back up and then, Steve.
You don't, you don't get many more, I don't think it really, in all honesty, it doesn't get much more complicated than that one. You know, when you're talking about a five-year agreement, it goes off into 2031, that's a lot of, that's a lot of layers of that on you.
This is true.
Kind of gives people an appreciation of the, of the complexity of the programming and the, the funding streams that we rely on.
Sure, especially now that we're two and a half months into not even being paid for it.
Well, hopefully, we're starting to grate a little bit.
Makes you appreciate Sam looking with you to figure that out, too.
Yeah, that's why we need Sam.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think we can take a motion at this point.
I'll move to approve the MHIDEI DNA items 1 and 2.
I will second it.
Motion to approve the two items for MHIDEI DNA. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, great. Well, thanks, Julie and Kathy. Moving on to the consent agenda, a pretty small one.
Yeah, move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Moving on to our authorities, boards, and commissions, where Erin is always looking for additional people to help fill open spots, because there's what, a couple hundred of them, it feels like. So we do have a resignation, Patricia Long from the Housing Authority. She served for quite a long period, and we do appreciate her service from February 27th of 2007 to September 9th of 2025. Unless there's any comments or questions on her long valuable service.
Yeah, Pat's been a valuable part of the Housing Authority and a lot of other organizations in the community for a long time. Appreciate her service.
Time for somebody a pinch younger to step up and fill the multiple slots that she, that she took care of.
I'll move to approve the ABC resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the AP, ABC resignation. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the check run, do we, do we have one this morning?
We do have a check run, and the check.
Oh, it's on the lower part of the stack.
Yeah, it's at underneath. The check that I'd like to recognize today is for housing transitions. They're one of our really crucial partners of the county in working with those who have, are experiencing housing insecurity. And with that, I would move that we approve the check run dated September 5th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated September 5th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Do we have an administrator's report, Joe?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Moving on to reports and announcements, do we have a, looks like we have a little registration.
We do have a voter registration report. So today, in Center County, the total number of voters on our report is 101,659. Of those, 41,221 are registered with the Democratic Party, 162 Green Of those, 41,221 are registered with the Democratic Party, 162 Green Party, 555 Libertarian, 15,702 with no affiliation, and 42,008 with, are registered with the Republican Party. All of the other minor parties comprised 2011 voters, and that brings us to our total of 101,659, which is down 28 from last week's report. Moving on then to our precinct of the week. Our precinct of the week is Precinct 14 in Snowshoe Borough. They have 413 registered voters at Precinct 14. Their voter turnout on, in the May primary was 26%. They vote at the Snowshoe Fire Hall in the social hall, and we would like to thank the Snowshoe Fire Hall for the use of their facility for elections. So that's the voter report.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. I don't think we have any other announcements from an election standpoint, right?
Well, just a reminder, just a reminder that, that the Elections Office has moved to the Community Services Building.
That's right.
It's no longer in the Willbank Building. And if you need to access services, you have to go over to Howard Street, the old Center Crest Building, and they'll, they'll be able to direct you to, to the office over there.
Yeah, and the most convenient parking floor is kind of at the back of the building, off the alley.
Yep.
Designed it so we've got parking for citizens right there at the door.
Wilson Street.
On Wilson, right off of Wilson Street. All right. John, any executive sessions to report were to hold?
No executive sessions to report, however, there is a need to hold a brief executive session to discuss a legal matter.
All right, great. Thank you, John. Moving on to the public meeting schedule on Thursday, September 11th, we do have a Board of Elections meeting in this room at 3:00 PM. Tuesday, September 16th, we have the Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00. And then Thursday, September 18th, we have the Combined Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00. And then another Board of Elections meeting at 3:00, since we're beginning to approach the general election of 2025. Tim and Gary's favorite time, questions from the press.
Community block grant funding is secure until, I get state budgets and federal budgets on them. So when you say there's, it's zeroed in the federal budget, when does?
The federal budget starts October 1st. At this point, the expectation is it also will not be approved on time. So it's up to our U.S. Senators and Congresspeople to decide whether that program continues to receive funding, or whether it will be zeroed out, obviously for rural Pennsylvania. Zeroing out the community development block grant funding would be devastation. And I also say that as former president of CEDOCAG, our regional development organization that covers multiple counties in central and eastern Pennsylvania.
Are any projects that are grandfathered, or October 1st, we don't know?
I believe if they've already been funded, they would continue, but we wouldn't be able to work on any new projects.
With the mobile Elections Office van, is the county looking to set up any satellite offices for the upcoming November election?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't anticipate any setting up a satellite office for the 2025 elections. I think the reason that we pursued the mobile elections van is it's an opportunity to get out throughout the county and including to downtown State College and on campus without having to set up a, a satellite office. So this is kind of a self-contained mobile satellite office that we can take on the road and, and, you know, place it wherever, you know, is going to be of best use.
I hate to ask, but, those birds outside, it's looking like a Hitchcock movie. Is there any other?
That's our county bird, Gary. We, we hold them at high esteem.
I'd rather be voting on a county mammal, or a county fossil, or something.
Is there any other discussions about?
We've done about everything we can do within the parameters of, of, I guess, good ethics, not, not to disturb them anymore, but it, it appears that they've taken residence in Center County. And I, I think the upside of this is they do migrate come winter, and I think that might be what you're seeing, is that the migration pattern, include them all gathering up into a, into a flock and maybe heading south in posthaste.
So having replaced the entire roof down to, I don't know, what is the proper term?
The deck.
The deck, down to the deck. They're not interested in eating the roof anymore, and as Steve mentioned, they are protected legally. We've tried animatronic eagles, we've tried effigies of supposedly deceased vultures, and it's, they're here.
They really like us, apparently.
Yes. I think they love launching off of the 911 tower into the thermals so that they can keep our, pos, from the positive standpoint, so they can keep our roadways clean.
That's right.
And they are migratory birds, protected under regulations related to migratory birds.
But feel free to invite them to your house, Gary.
Yes.
That would be, I think maybe a few of them would love to, love to follow you home.
Nice ridges out there, too.
How many other creatures are in my place there? That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? No? All right. Unless there's anything else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Enter.
Sorry. Oh, okay.
Yes, sorry, John.
I'll move to.
Enter to executive.
Enter executive session. Yeah.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session at 10:37. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.